All right, we'll call this special meeting to order here at six oh four P M. On Monday, September twenty third with a quick roll call.
To Erickson, here.
Can they?
Here.
Joe Newman?
Here.
Sean Bertson?
Here.
Craig Collins here.
Perfect, our consent agenda here. Any questions on the approval of the agenda for tonight, the expenditures? Specifically, any expenditures, note the stepping stones, take care.
That's the only senator for this moment.
Any questions on that? Everybody's approved that already. The county match that. There's no, no questions on that. Welcome. Motion to approve that consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second, second by Ken. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Anybody that's staying, say something. Okay, the citizens forum, is there any citizen here that wants to speak? No, okay. Moving into old business here. Discussion and possible approval of resolution eight, second contract amendment with Sheldon for sewer.
Okay. So, the attorney has sent back a clarification that it is the exact same contract except for extending it an extra twenty years. That's the only, she's confirming that it's not changing at all. However, there were some recommendations from Mark Land from Snyder and Associates. So, talking to the attorney again today, she would like to know if you'd want to implement those. Which will take a little bit of time, obviously, just to go back to their attorney. And their counsel to approve. I also heard Craig Craig posted question that I asked her, are we legally, do we legally have to update? Or change and amend the contract legally, no. We do not have to legally, but the alternative of not approving it with the extra twenty years is that. They would never pay us the million dollars connection fee. I also talked.
Your clarity, that's part of my question is.
Yeah.
Are we obligated to extend the additional twenty years to receive the million dollars?
Yes, you are. You're not legally obligated to do anything, but if they, if this is the only way they can get their dollars.
Correct.
Then we would never get paid.
So they, they, the, the first amendment. Says that they owe us the additional billion dollars.
Yes.
Five twenty.
By December thirty first, yeah, by December thirty fourth of this year.
The second amendment is saying that they need an additional twenty years.
Right.
That helps them finance theirs, but it does not obligate. We have no reason to do the addition twenty years legally. Other than the, the million dollars is not the risk because they may hurt their ability to fund the million dollars.
Right.
So there's the legal and the ethical, I want to.
Right.
Legal sort it out. We do not have to legally extend the contract.
We legally do not, but most likely you would never get paid a million dollars.
Yes, it does with the million dollars of risk.
Yeah.
Legally it doesn't, ethically their ability to pay, didn't they?
Yes. Though I'd also talked to the representative with the representative from the USDA. And she, because you guys were posing the question, is could we just have them pay us the grant dollars? The option to potentially waive the other three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, she said no. The, it all is on a sliding scale matrix. That makes it affordable for Sheldon. So if, so if you city of Slater would like to. Reduce the cost for the connection fee down to the six hundred and fifty thousand, they would have to go through the whole process again to figure out. How much the grant would be versus the amount of dollars they would have to take out in a loan from USDA. So that's all on this slide, sliding scale matrix. Would all start over again.
It's kind of figured that's how that would work.
Yeah.
You couldn't, we couldn't reduce it because they're only gonna give them like a fifty fifty grand.
Yeah.
You can only, you have to put so much your own.
They figure out how much is, is they are financially able to put into it, and that's how much they determine the grant.
So this is my, this is my thought and potential proposal. We don't have a clause in it currently that gives us an out. I would like to see if our attorney could draft. A clause that would give us a ten or twenty year cancellation notice, clock it. Ability to cancel the contract the next amount of years with so much notice. Add that to the contract for approval and signature, agree to the exit, agree to the twenty sixty five date. Let the payment settle, get through the payment, provide the notice. And try to get us back as close to that original date as possible. If that's ten years, fifteen years, I. Can we add that clause in? As our back door and, and, and then what I would recommend or what I would do is sit down with Sheldon and just say, look, this clause is coming. This is the purpose of this clause. Don't be surprised, you're gonna get noticed from us when this is executed, because we want to be tethered to twenty forty five or whatever the original date.
Yeah.
And at those times, we'll have other discussions about where we're about that.
But the USDA won't approve their funding unless it's supporting, unless it's an additional twenty years.
But the agreement will be written with an additional twenty years and agreed to.
Okay.
But they have an out, they have a section in there where they can get out, right? We do not have that. So what if we redline our ability to get out as an addition? And so it is a forty year agreement.
But we have ways out.
The payment is a forty, forty year agreement. We're, we're agreeing to that now. It's gonna take them, well, that's between them and the USDA, yes. We're getting our money, it's gonna take them forty years to pay the USDA. We may or may not have to provide services for that forty year. I'm not, that's, that's not real clear in here. But it says we can get out, but where I read it was that we can only get out if Sheldon agrees to that.
Where's, what, can you give me the paragraph?
I don't, not up to.
Oh, I thought you were pointing at.
No, but it was, but I think it says we can get out of it, but we can, they can get out of it with so many days' notice. We can't get out of it except for non-payment. Other than unless we have to still, they have to have a, a means of. Sewer treatment. And they have to agree to. Getting out of it. Or we don't have an out. Is how I read that contract.
And I do remember that, I just basically sensed they're gonna refuse our, our right to, basically the same, same, we can't get out.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'd rather just have something in there that potentially lets us get an out if possible.
And I agree.
As a card, as a workaround to the reality of not messing with the USDA and not messing with the.
Well, right, I'm just not sure that the, that we'll be able. Are you thinking we can put that in before this gets signed?
Yes.
So we'll see that happen, because once it changes. My understanding from what Jen said is that if we change anything about this at all. The whole USDA program looks it over again, right?
Well, they'll look at the contract, they'll, they, they would have to approve the word, the addition, additional verbiage in the contract.
Yeah, and I don't see them, I don't see them willing to do that if the. You know, that they'd be making Sheldon pay for a sewage treatment plant for twenty years beyond. When they're actually using, plus they'd have to. Develop some other. Form of dealing with their sewage.
By that end.
So can anybody give me a scenario? I'm having a hard time imagining Slater not providing. Wastewater treatment to Sheldon. Can anybody give me a scenario in which you think that would happen within the bounds of? Being good neighbors?
I could see it more as them a customer, not a. Not a joint.
Not a partner.
Not a partner. Yeah.
Yeah. Ideally.
And why are they not a customer now?
So originally, everyone set it that way, yeah.
Why was it set up that way?
Because I was, I was probably a baby. I don't know.
Yeah, that goes back to this two thousand six.
Contract.
Right.
And nobody knows why it was set up that way.
From my understanding, it's the USDA. Brody, somebody, a representative from the USDA wrote the contract in two thousand six.
Okay, so I want to talk about this email from Mark and.
Before you move on to an answer to your question that I would foresee, it's one of the big developers decides that Sheldon is your next target instead of us.
Yeah.
If L W family moves in there, then suddenly they're gonna a thousand people on it, three hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
And yes, I can clearly say they would need their own super facility.
And you, and you would like to think that they would say, hey, we need our own, we need our.
Yes, but I would hate to.
You would like to think.
I'd hate to have that on the hope.
Right, no, exactly.
You gotta deal with it too, it's.
Yeah, right.
It's a dream scenario that, that mean, yeah.
But it's not all. Just start playing for worst cases and I've dealt with Danny Ford and.
Yeah.
When he decides to wade in, then there's no saying what'll happen.
Yeah.
So I think we need to ask. Engineer. And or lawyer. And what hap, within the, if we sign this as it is. What happens if Sheldon says, well, we're gonna develop and we need. Capacity for an additional six hundred people.
Well, it's in there for four hundred, so I'd say once they cover that, then you're done.
What's that? I, I want an engineer and a lawyer to tell me that, although I respect your opinion.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, it's on paper and it's in the contract right now that that's all they're allotted, allotted for.
But it doesn't have a ramification, what happens if they exceed it? It says they're not allowed.
It does say we would have to negotiate.
Yeah, it doesn't say it breaks the contract, it just says they're not allowed to go above that number, and I don't, why we would control that.
I do, yeah.
I, I wouldn't want to be roped into, we have to pay for an upgrade to the facility. At, at eighty eight percent of the cost.
Yeah, and that's the, the suggestion that Taylor made about. Okay, we'll have a forty year contract, but after. Twenty more years, the original forty years, we can back out.
Yeah.
I would like the same thing to apply to the four hundred headcount. If your census and they can do a census, we can do a census, if it exceeds four hundred. We start a, a ten year termination, whatever the right thing is. We do have, at least give them an opportunity to build their own. We can't just say shut them off tomorrow.
Yeah.
But they should build you something in ten years, you guys took, what, five years?
I think usually the D N R gives you, yeah, maybe five years to get something figured out.
So when we need to put some, we need to put a hundred L M I housing units.
So, yeah, I, I like Mark's thing, it's just I want some teeth behind.
Yeah, no, I agree.
To go above four hundred, we're gonna give you ten years notice that we're, we can't cancel the contract.
Yeah, I, I would like that question to be answered.
I think that's the path of least resistance is to start there and see if we can do that, because if we can't do that, then. Are we not in a position where we want to renegotiate the whole entire contract?
Well, I have very strong feelings about, all right, first let me ask this question. So in this email from Mark. He references paragraph three point six point one, I, and four point four, I don't have that in my contract, so I need to see. The real contract that we are or are not approving, or does he have a different one?
Is that the amendment from a year ago that Mark was referring to? I couldn't find that either.
Yeah, I can't find the source, so I was wanting to get that from the amendment we had earlier.
I mean, I, I can't vote on a contract if I'm not looking at the right one.
So Jen is.
Looking at the right one.
But yes, what you say is just the first contract from two thousand seven, we don't have the amendment from a year or two ago.
Oh.
Where are you seeing it, Mark? No, this is, this is the amendment, the, the second amendment.
I'm saying. Seller for costs of actual damages caused by discharge of seller's harmful waste into the purchaser's facilities.
那段 sentences term shall be defined.
That doesn't line up, because that's not even in that section.
Right, that's what I mean. And he's saying that that's. Yeah, let's eliminate it because it's defined in.
Well, he suggested you add paragraph three point six point two. He said, yeah, he suggested you add paragraph three point six point two for capital improvements.
Okay, he was referring back to this one, the, the two thousand and.
The original.
Yeah.
I just looked at that. So that's a problem. He hasn't looked at the new one.
This is supposedly.
It's identical.
Except for the paragraphs are numbered differently.
Yeah.
Well, there's no three point six point one.
Page nine.
Eight nine.
Sue, depends on which one you printed, there was one that I think came from Sheldon, one that came from Jen.
Okay.
Is that.
There we go, yeah.
There are three point six point one in this old contract.
See, there's so many on our account, I really looked through it this afternoon.
See, there are three point six point one in this old contract refers to this. Purchaser, but. Proportionate share. Which I think is what he's talking about, which sounds more. You know, to eliminate this sentence where the purchasers proportionate share, whereas the three point six point one that's typed up in this new. Much more easily legible page on page nine is talking, three point six point one is talking about damage caused by harmful waste. So they're not, these contracts are not identical in any way, shape or form. I don't care, it's two point six point one. Ah, is it not?
Yeah, I thought I looked through there this afternoon several times.
It's two point six point one.
Now how about four point four and four point five?
He wants us, he thinks we should look to get rid of the two point six point one. Because, because it deals with that arbitrary operation equivalent.
Well, and it says Sheldon defined in the appendix number one, and there really isn't.
So he wants appendix one gone, basically.
Yeah. So this should really be.
So anyway, what it says in number two, add paragraph three point six point two. Um, I'm pretty hard to know unless we can get this language in here to clarify. In a future capital improvement. How we're gonna decide the splits.
Which is what Mark's recommending. I, I'm saying add number two.
I feel really strongly that we need to have number two in a new contract. For those of us old members here, we swept through this a year ago. And.
And just hold it at the end.
And we had to fold at the end because. There, the wording is, is. Unclear and. Although we didn't feel it was fair, we didn't have a choice, but we can make, make it more clear for the next time around. And let's not make a future council, don't do all that we did a year ago.
Well, and the problem is we're at that same point again now, because we're at that same point where we can either fold. And accept a forty year contract, which we all know that thing's not gonna be there forty years from now. They're financing something that's not gonna be in existence in forty years.
And that's what I talked about with the USDA as well.
Huh?
That's what I talked about with the USDA, and like, I'm just gonna say it out loud.
Yeah.
I know you probably realize this, but you realize you're financing that forty year project that's. Where the equipment is, we're gonna be, yeah, we're gonna be putting them in your last twentieth or best.
Right, they're gonna have to.
She's like, yeah.
They're gonna be.
And just to be clear, Sheldon does not want forty years.
Oh, really?
Sheldon wanted twenty years. This is a USDA calculation thing that Jen's saying, they're forcing them into that. They want to do a accelerated payment schedule and be out from underneath of it.
She did say that, the USDA gal did tell me that, yes, they, they, they are planning on an accelerated payment, but nobody is gonna make them. Do an accelerated.
Okay, well, that would be.
It's all based on their revenues or something and.
So USDA has so much money, they just.
They say what you.
They say what's affordable.
Yeah.
For them.
Yeah.
And they, they're saying that what's affordable to the city of Sheldon is to stretch it out for forty years.
So while you're, Sue mentioning things like, hey, this is really, I mean, like, I kind of view this as, we're sitting in a stage like this. The first step should be. To get some sort of out for Slater and agree to the contract that we've already, we've already agreed to this contract, we're already in this contract. So the first step to me would be just adding one line that gives us the ability to get out, whether they grow over or we give them so many years' notice. If that's acceptable, if that's acceptable, then okay, let's get that in there, let's just agree to it, let's provide the notice and. What we need to, if that's not agreeable, then I guess what I'm proposing is, then it's time for the, I'm totally not agreeable to this, or this, or that. Then we're gonna have to open that can of worms and go back down that road, which is gonna almost guarantee you. You're not getting paid that money this year, next year, who knows?
And if that starts. Do we do or do not sign? Negotiating new contract, are they not still required to pay us a million dollars by the end of the year?
On paper, yeah.
On paper, I think.
Tractually, yes.
They're committed to paying us by the end of the year.
And I think that's what Craig's initial question was, is ethically, ethically and legally, legally, if we say, no, we're not willing to do a new agreement, they still owe us the money. The ethical side is, are we gonna do that to them and take their six hundred away? The number is four forty is their dollar amount, plus the grant, which is six hundred. Because the number is like one point two and change.
Yeah.
That they owe us.
Six fifty, the grant's six fifty or something.
Six fifty and they have like four forty four or something, if they.
And so everybody thinks we can't put this number two in. In an amended contract.
I think the question is, why are we renegotiating and why would we change this at this moment? We're not. We're, we've already agreed to all these terms, and so now we're at the negotiating table, and we're saying, we know we agreed to that contract in good faith, we did, but you know, now that you brought this up, we want to change a bunch of stuff in it ourselves. I think if we're gonna do that, then we're gonna go all the way through it, and, and we're gonna start all over with the whole vision of what the partnership looks like. If we just about getting a million bucks. Then let's find the simplest way possible that can get by and get approved by the USDA to get that done. And let the renegotiation of the contract occur after we give the notice in the window of the next twenty years. Remaining on the existing.
My thought is because we're doing, we want to get it right for the future and. A, a future council in twenty years is gonna have to go through all that we just, all that we went through and plus twenty years more.
I think you're gambling a million, you're potentially gambling a million dollars at that point.
No, you just told me we got the million dollars.
Yeah, but owed to us versus paid to us are two different things.
So you. Okay.
Does that make sense or no? I, I get what you're saying, we want to fix some stuff, and I agree.
I agree.
I agree. But then let's open the whole contract up and start over and propose a totally new contract and throw their USDA funding aside and just eat that million for now.
Okay, so you don't get the million dollars, is that non-payment?
Well, then you have to litigate with them, right? I mean, then you.
That's what the judge says, that.
No.
The USDA is never gonna let us shut their sewer off. That's just not gonna happen.
I have me.
D N R.
I have me. I mean, because it's in there, what you can, without paying her, all that's a pain.
Sixty days after non-payment.
Correct, but what do you think that D N R is gonna say to us? You think they're gonna legally let us do that?
There's people that have trained and can pump out their pits.
Okay, just indulge me in that.
I mean, there's people out there.
Six on this contract.
What's that, two?
Page six in the contract.
Yep.
In the middle of the page is two point six point one.
Yeah.
Their share of necessary capital improvements.
Yeah, they've tagged it.
There is a typo in here, which is to Sheldon's great disadvantage. That plus sign there should be a dividing sign.
Yeah.
No, but I mean.
Our attorney didn't say that.
This is ethics, I mean, if we want to talk about ethics, this is unethical. To.
But it then says, the terms are defined in appendix number one, so you'd have to go to appendix number one to define.
No, we've been down that argument before, yeah.
That's, that's an endless loop.
Yeah, yeah.
And we've spent, we've spent engineer and legal money and so is Sheldon.
That's where the engineers differ.
And that's where we, that's where we just ended up folding and saying five, twelve percent. Because if we don't get this done, we're never gonna get this thing.
And when I went through this. With the old contract, the same thing is in there, it's just. It's just unclear on this bad copy.
It's, it's, that's a division symbol, but it's very hard to read on that.
It looks more like a plus, but it's a divided symbol. If you look at the math. It makes sense that this is a dividing symbol, and no.
Yeah.
I'm guessing no engineers or lawyers have looked at it closely enough to catch that. Our, our attorney has sent a typographical corrected version of it, so.
Does that include a bunch of these? Where it refers to number, appendix number I instead of number one, or L I. And then there, and then there's a whole bunch where there's. Waste, staff, water, and they've got a bunch of them that are hyphenated.
I don't understand what you say when you say, mean, there's nothing in appendix one. I mean, I, I see like appendix one spells out right here very clearly what the. Split is, how the cost is calculated, you are here in this formula. Seller's share of treatment, O and M equals.
So O and M is, O and M is calculated is different than capital improvement.
That's not. And so your concern, concern, Sue, then to go back to this, is about capital improvements to the.
Yes.
So let's just walk through this formula. Purchaser allocated population equivalent, so that's so many gallons per day. Plus the total design population equivalent. Times capital improvement cost. So that's all the things, and it's, it's supposed to be doing a ratio, so Sheldon divided by total times capital improvement cost. Is what it's supposed to be. And it's Sheldon time plus total times capital improvement cost.
As defined in appendix number I.
Yeah. Which is a silly thing, but if there's legal trouble, appendix I is not appendix one, and you know how lawyers can be.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely typos there for sure. But, but that clause, if you think about it from Sheldon's perspective, if you get rid of the, these terms shall be defined in appendix number one. That makes no sense for their benefit, right? Because their vision is to not grow, our vision is, so in theory, that formula. Is allotted to where if we decided to build a facility with capacity for another five thousand, and they said we don't want any, they would be on the hook for their, for five thousand, basically.
Well.
A lot of population plus wastewater treatment design population. Times capital improvement cost, so regardless of whether they got any growth in it, I read that as they would foot the bill for our growth capacity we asked for. Right?
Yeah.
They're on the hook for our, our portion, so that's why I think then they put in these terms that are defined in the appendix number one, because it says, look, Slater, you can't say, you know, we're gonna expand the facility by twenty five hundred. Households. And Sheldon says we don't need to expand at all, if we get rid of that clause, then we can hold them to twenty five hundred households for Slater's benefit, they would pay the capital improvement cost on that.
Or their, their percentage of, yeah.
A percentage of it, because it would do, that's exactly what happened.
If appendix number one is, is removed from there, they would not, they would just pay. Population equivalent plus the design that we're doing.
So on what basis are they saying?
So I think that's why they put that in there. That's what Mark recommended, that was the clause you were talking about that Mark recommended.
I don't read that in here.
Right, this is what Mark wanted to eliminate, we believe number one was supposed to be two point six one when you read Mark's recommendations, eliminate sentence. These terms shall be defined as, remove that sentence, so Mark's saying, remove that sentence. My guess is their attorney asked for that sentence because they want to go on the flow percentages for their cap, for their.
Right.
Cost share in, right, that's how we got to where this is at.
Right, and part of that is because they're. So if you look at these, these flow numbers are way out of whack because we have I N I, we have. We have raining water. From our streets that infiltrates into our sewers. They do not have that. Because theirs is a closed system and ours is an open system.
I, I bet to differ that any system is so closed that they're not getting any I N I.
Well, I agree, but.
I know they have, I know they have pumps that are.
Yeah.
In low spots.
Right.
On areas.
But there's.
But for the most part, extremely low compared to ours.
Yes, very much.
But that's why they picked the driest weather months to do the calculation.
Right.
To try to negate that fact.
And that's why ours is figured on, what is it, a hundred and thirty some gallons per, per day, and theirs is eighty two gallons per day. Per capita, per day. You know. So. If, if you were, if you didn't realize what the I N I is and that you think these people just don't use the bathroom very much, they use it ridiculously.
But this is to be recalculated annually. Right, so these definitions in here evolved, that eighty two point five maybe was at this last contract time period, but that number would change, just like our one thirty six would change.
That would.
And their percentage would have changed.
For year one only, wouldn't it?
Right, yeah.
Right, and, and you also have to figure in there that. Appliances are a lot more water.
Energy.
Energy or water, you know. Cautious and.
Yeah.
Yeah, e- everything is low flow, because I read this correctly now, it's only the meters, not the.
Right, per person estimate from two thousand six.
Yeah.
A suggestion, which I don't know if we can get to. It seems like we're working not in cooperation with Sheldon. Can we get our counsel, their counsel, our lawyers, their lawyers? And actually push back USDA and say. Sheldon, listen. Want to change, we don't want to change, we have a contract that says we don't have to change. USDA, you admit that none of our equipment is gonna last as long. This is just stupid bureaucratic rules. Let's, we give it a shot before we change the contract.
Yeah.
There is so many things in here. My success chances probably aren't. My success chances probably aren't that great. I didn't deal with government organizations that much, but.
The federal?
Is it worth the job?
Federal's just, yeah.
I'm just asking a question.
I agree, the, the problem is we go back to that same thing, but what's the, I mean, it, it took them how many years to get this, to get this? That, that, the, um, I mean, way back during the design process, this was all being negotiated. And then, um, and we finally decided, screw it, over two percent, we're not gonna, we're not gonna hold this thing up because they were holding up. That had to be approved before the USDA approved. So any, any changes we wanna make, Sheldon's gonna have to approve them first, which their.
Changes to.
Anything.
But I'm saying, we don't change this all. We just go back to USDA and say, we don't wanna change the contract. Either town and Slater in particular has no reason to change the contract. Can we apply whatever to?
USDA?
Just, yeah.
I'm sure they have a quote, I mean, I'm sure they have. There's no different than our feedback there, some of the own.
I'm not saying it's not a tough sell, but I also know.
It seems like a box that should be checked in the progression of lease.
But the, yeah, and then even if, even if Sheldon all agreed to this and the USDA agreed to look at it, it's at least a two-year process for them to go through this and determine what the grant amount and the loan amount and the refinancing terms of that loan amount will be. Um, I mean, we'll, we'll be sitting here holding the bag for it for two more years. I mean, this is not a, it sounds like something you should be able to do in a couple of months. It'd be, it's two years. It took the USDA two years to come up with these quantities and amounts to get them back to Sheldon. I mean, we have this, we have this thing built before the USDA got back to them to know how much of a grant they were gonna get. And then they still don't have it. So.
But, uh, but I am highly resistant to a forty-year contract.
I a hundred percent agree with you.
And I think we all are, and I guess.
Yeah, and I think what you're saying is, yours, what you're trying to say, Greg, is you're not saying, you just push back on USDA to say, put twenty years in that contract, it's signed, it's done, it's over with.
Yeah, correct.
And hope with the mindset of they're not gonna redo everything and redo the calculations and that. They're gonna see that both sides of the contract agree to the twenty years, put the twenty years in the contract and be done with it.
Is the, is your dream situation?
They just say Sheldon has a twenty-year contract repayment. And.
That's Sheldon's problem and.
She said they don't though. They are all contracts are forty years and it's up to them to make additional payments and make it. That is the only way they loan money is on a forty-year contract. And it's up to the individual group entity, whatever, to make additional payments to shorten that span.
Done. So we got money from Story County today. I mean, I joked with, I think.
They, they could, they could go for grants and, and to pay it, to make payments instead of upping their rates, they could.
Can they replace the six hundred fifty with money?
Not cause the project's already built, so nobody's gonna give them grant dollars for something that's already built.
So if we talk, so Jen, you talked to somebody at the USDA, it sounds like. Let's call that person back and let's ask about Slater adding a clause that provides a cancellation notice of.
Ten, ten years?
In our contract, we're ready to agree to the contract. In our current contract, there's no, there is no ability for us to cancel this contract. We're gonna be adding in a clause that would give Slater the right to cancel the contract with ten years' notice or whatever notice. Would that be acceptable and approvable to the USDA to finish to close this out? Or would that trigger?
A whole revaluation.
I think we need to know that answer because I think everybody seems to me is in consensus that if the answer to that is no, then this discussion is far deeper and bigger than oh, uh, one hour meeting tonight in a special session. And it is gonna involve attorneys and Mark Land and Sue's corrections and everybody's, right? Are we in agreement on that?
Yeah, yes. And I, and I think the, I mean, the, the best news I heard all day is that is that Sheldon would rather see that be a twenty-year contract than a forty-year contract. I thought, I, I just figured all along. It was Sheldon's doing to make this a forty-year because it makes their monthly payment less. And they weren't worried about the capital improvement because it was just gonna tie us to them forever. And that's not really their.
I don't think they heard a lot of that.
We're in happy alignment right now. That's why I was hoping maybe is a combined two towns, we can leverage.
I can tell you that, that meetings that we had combined with them were contentious and ugly every time.
And I don't know where that's at now, but I can tell.
Lawyers didn't help in any.
No. It does not feel that way at all, meeting with their mayor, meeting with Rachel, talking with them, their counsel.
I'm not sure who.
I don't know who else changed off of it.
I think the other thing too, we have to keep in mind is, the original Sheldon clerk has passed away. Who was a part of this from the beginning. That's a disadvantage to them and to us as well. And so I think they're, who knows, but something to me, Craig has been over there to me. I feel like they're totally wanting to come to the table and get it done. And I don't think they're trying to drag their feet or be a thorn in our side on it.
Yeah.
I think they really wanna just get it done and check out their list, cause they're waiting for a check for six hundred and something thousand dollars and they wanna get it.
Well, right.
They, they, they wanna close this out.
I know, I, I think so. I think it's just a matter of, um. I think, yeah.
Could we maybe move towards a motion of getting an answer to that question? And having this on the fourteenth agenda with an answer and then to have a definite action item?
We could just total it from now on for motion. I need to have a no typo, a no typo, no typo contract and.
Can you send us the one the attorney sent us, sent out to counsel? And when we say our attorney, that is, is our city attorney.
No, this is, uh, this is with allers including.
Okay. But, okay, it's with allers including. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Allers and, our, our, our general counsel.
City attorney that does simple contract, sale of property, that kind of. Might do a resolution and ordinance, that kind of thing. But more of this kind of litigation. She doesn't really do litigation and boom, that's why we go to all her company.
I mean, the other, the other. I'm sure we can't have an outside contract with Sheldon all holding their feet to the fire that they will make accelerated payments on this, but. Like I said, that's the most positive thing I heard is they didn't, they would rather it be a twenty-year contract and they had a little intention of accelerating their payments. They can, but they can say that, we have no out if they decide, well, no, those are gonna be too expensive and we can't afford to do that anymore, so we're just gonna stick with the forty.
Or their council changes in two years and they decide not to.
Yeah, why are we paying this?
I mean, that could change every two to four years or. Depends on who.
But ultimately, it doesn't matter what it does, cause that's the payment to the.
We're paid by them.
Right, except that when they, if they were to pay that off in twenty years and that, that payment goes away, this contract, we're no longer held to a forty-year.
Not if we sign this contract.
If we sign this contract, we are, that's, that's my concern.
That's just, that's just.
No, we're still bound. I, regardless of the loan, we're still bound on this agreement for the service.
This contract has nothing to do with loan payments. It has to do with the forty-year contract.
This is a twenty, this is like a twenty-eighty agreement, basically.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
Binding us together for services. So that's why I think where a lot of the concern is just regardless of what they pay or don't they pay, we're forty years. We're locking Slater into forty years. But there is, and that's worth to, then if you're gonna renegotiate it, you go into the capital improvement section, you start looking at that because you're probably at that point stuck to forty years. But you just as well have really clean clauses that make sure they share the right portion of capital improvements.
But the same, by the same token, we're already, if we're, we're already in agreement for this, like you said, and, and, um. I don't, I don't see how, I don't see how or why the USDA would ever let us change that to twenty-year or let us have an out of it.
I don't, I don't think so either. I mean, I like the idea. I don't think anybody allowed a ten-year. I don't know if Sheldon signed it because what's saying, we don't get it signed and then send them the notice the next day. So now you've got over forty years, it wouldn't take you out in ten years. I think maybe try the twenty, knowing that's what DNR is gonna do. Them are gonna pay it off, but I don't see them allowing it either.
And for what a sign.
Who knows? It's what we wanna do. Yeah, who knows until you ask.
And they might not even read that line. If we put that line, if the USDA says something about it, maybe we flag him up. Maybe if we just send it back and say, yep, we agreed to it, here's it's signed, it's signed and Sheldon was on, but maybe we need to go to Sheldon and say, hey, we're gonna, here's our red line clause. And meet with them face to face, whoever, and just say, this is what we're doing, this is what it is. And sign it, they sign it. And send it to the USDA and say it's done. But see if they approve it and pay. And if they do, then it's like, sorry, you guys should have rewritten the contract.
Yeah.
And Sean, that's where I was headed. I wanted to say it was a twenty forty-six termination with a twenty thirty-six notification. So they have ten years to act. So no, I, I don't think it's ethical all the same, yeah, we're gonna shut it up in a month.
No.
So I was saying, that gives them a full ten years.
That wording's good.
No.
A twenty forty-six.
Twenty forty-six termination.
With a required twenty thirty-six notification. Yeah, I like that.
And yeah, and I was gonna get into tactics, but I don't wanna tell the USDA any of this, really. I would like to protest that we would like to change it, but if they won't agree. Sorry, I would like to change the term of their loan to twenty years.
Yeah.
Would be my first argument. And my second one, let's agree with Sheldon. This is what the verbiage, we wanted this language. And we just send that to the USDA and don't see a thing. You hope the other guy's an idiot, doesn't read this way, hope for. I know I'm being recorded saying that, but. Even the USDA agrees.
So do you guys wanna go that route? We'll go to Sheldon with it?
First, first one there, the thing, what Sue said really resonates to me in terms of, um. I don't see, as much as I, as much as I would love to see it happen. I don't see any way, whether it's ten years, twenty years or forty years from now, that we're not gonna be providing the sewage treatment services to Sheldon. I don't see any way that Sheldon's ever gonna have another way to provide sewage treatment for their, for their sewage. And so I think we're gonna, I think, just because, all the way back to two thousand six, we're tied to them to do that forever. Even if it's just on an ethical obligatory basis, we signed up for this. Um, they're never gonna be able to afford to build a sewage treatment plant over there. Um, I don't think. And, and so, yes, my, the only thing I would say is, okay, so this contract, we're gonna be providing services somehow, some way, shape or form for forty years. But in the event, anything has to happen and change, you know, with capital improvements. This will not be the contract we will use to do that. But the, any, any further capital improvements, this has to be, we have forty years or whatever to determine it, or we have the life of this facility to determine it, but we need to re re, um, negotiate what the terms of any new capital improvement would look like. And honestly, their ongoing maintenance and operation level is so ridiculously low, that should be done at the same time.
I think that's gonna get changed, I mean, just starting to build them, you know, accordingly.
We're gonna calculate it. They're gonna have their meter done. We're gonna do the actual calculations.
But just any, any routine maintenance, you know.
Yes.
Yeah.
They should be getting more than.
Yeah, but that twelve percent could go to, fifteen percent or it could go to eight percent this next year. And then I think that's where Craig's recommendation of, let's have, I think you were saying monthly, I don't care, monthly, quarterly. Let's just, let's just sit down at that point and run through what all the expenses were and make sure they know and they're on the same page. We can do that from an office standpoint. To keep the relationship good and run through the line items.
I remember it actually says that in the contract. It's on a monthly basis, not an annual.
Then we're supposed to be meeting to talk about it, yeah.
Well, not meeting, just.
Right.
So we can just get a monthly number from the phone.
So I, I'm gonna try to summarize this so we can keep this moving here and get everybody out of here and, and hopefully an hour, but what we'd like to do is we'd like to have that written, a clause written in there that gives Slater the option to get out of the contract. Everybody was, is everybody okay with Craig's wording where he said a twenty forty-six out with a twenty thirty-six notification? Requirement of a twenty thirty-six notification, which would be twelve years from now. That's actually twenty-two years we're giving them. In theory, but it could, we could drag it out to.
Which is the original contract. That's why I pulled those numbers.
Is the forty-six, twenty forty-six date. So we put that wording in there, we add it. Let's gather with Sheldon and just tell them to their face what we're doing so they know. And I think we can say it in the right way that we are doing, that we're doing this to help them get their funding. Not because we absolutely have to. Hopefully they'll agree to that, sign it, and then we'll send it up to the USDA and we'll just have to then wait and see what happens. Understanding that, well, it's gonna be probably hard for them. It may be hard for them to pay us by the deadline we've set.
Well, yes, but part of that idea is that that clause isn't to turn the valve and shut you off from service.
No.
It's the, it's about, we, the contract has to end because this has been so clear or so unclear and so muddied all the way along and the process ugly and all those things that what we really need to do is, is we've got that twenty-two years to come up with a better way of, of doing this for future capital improvements. That's really what it's about.
Agreed.
And even if we go to the customers at that point, I mean, like Des Moines, Monrody Works comes way up. Ames has taken Kelly, I mean, it, there, it, it's.
Yeah, so things might have, might, something might have.
I would think there's probably a higher likelihood that Slater ends up annexing Sheldon before Polk City and somebody else ends up coming to him.
Yeah, probably in our, in our.
Yeah, I just, I just think, yeah, if we could get, don't tell them, we're, I agree, we're not trying to shut them off in twenty years yet. We're just, this needs to be redone.
Yeah, I think they, I have told Rachel that directly, that that's how the council feels.
Yeah.
Is, hey, we just, we'd rather start fresh at the end of this current agreement.
Yeah, well, we have time to do it. I mean.
And we know what technology is available and resources and facilities and sizing and there's so many variables. So could we maybe get a motion to have that language drafted by the attorney and presented to Sheldon?
Two, two questions. So one, skip the option of even trying to convince USDA not to change anything. The consensus, that's a waste of time.
Right.
And two, if we do change that language, I know it's redundant, but I would like it in two places. There was one where it talks about the, the duration. I'd like it in there that says, uh, uh, it currently expires in twenty forty-six. I would like that with the twenty thirty-six termination decision.
Would you be willing to get with Jen to provide that language?
But the, the other half was I hadn't brought up. Do we want that also at the four hundred population? Or just, let's not even go there. Let's just say that.
I would say.
One covers it, so let's not, let's not potentially agitate waters. Cause ultimately gets to the same spot and then it just gives us a firmer trigger.
Their operating and maintenance is gonna increase if they go over four hundred, right? If they outgrow, if they outgrow us, that percentage would evolve. So they're on the hook for the operating maintenance regardless of whether they grow over four hundred. It's not like they are off the hook. Their capital improvements would have to take into effect their growth plus different capacity. So what do we lose if we don't put the, what's the financial risk to Slater if we don't put the four hundred cap in there?
That's, I mean, as long as it's in the other place, I was only putting in there's a, you have a definite trigger, but it may cause more pain, but it's worth it saying.
Yeah.
Four hundred one people, really, you're gonna trigger it now?
I think per the consensus, it sounds like we're never gonna trip. We're not gonna trigger a cancellation, more of an expiration for renegotiation. It's more what the vision is.
There are limits in here of the capacity, the volume that we agreed to provide for Sheldon. That's already in here. It's related to four hundred people.
Right, and that, that was my point, but if I was on their end, I might say, well, that's pretty skinny. You're four hundred and ten people here to cancel the contract. So I was wondering if it's, you should put it in there because what happens if a big housing development moves in?
I'm saying that limit's already here.
His point is there's nothing that you can do when they hit that limit. The contract doesn't give you any action.
What do you do?
Future council's problem as solving some of the other things.
And I think that's what we're saying is, tonight, we're not able, I don't believe we're talking about and fixing the contract for future generations. We're trying to rectify what's already been done and get it resolved. Future generations are gonna have to figure that out, potentially this group.
We're just getting ending, is what we're trying to do.
We're trying to get paid.
Paid, yeah. Paid, number one.
Paid with an ending that doesn't bind us for forty years.
Alright, so don't.
I think.
Keep it as simple as possible, the smallest change possible.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just see if it works.
And as an end date, meaning not an end of service, but an end of.
Contract.
Yeah, and, and that we fully know we got a renegotiated contract, not an end of service.
No, an end of service.
I don't see it. I don't see it ever.
Yeah, yeah, just in this, I think just the end of, um.
The contract ends and if enormous amount of things have happened, if they grew and we didn't, then it may be also the end of service also.
Yeah, yeah. So let's, uh, get a motion to pull that language together, to sit down and present and share it with Sheldon and see if we can't do that over the next two-week period. Sheldon and see if we can't do that over the next two week period before we have to meet again.
I would, what's the consensus of people in terms of, do we? Do we send this to the lawyer to draft something, or do we discuss with Sheldon? First, saying, I, this is what we're, this is what we're looking at doing. Before we spend money to have it drafted and sent to you and your lawyer and.
I would go to show.
And I have planted some seeds like this and they could meet on this Friday at five o'clock.
Okay. That'd be great.
So that's, I would start with them.
If you guys wanna present that to them Friday at five, that's the only time. I, I put it out last week to see like, when can we? But that's the only time that it will be this Friday at five. So I think we can just meet a couple of council people. If Jen, if you're here, if you're, if you're not, it really doesn't matter as long as we get some council people together and. The mayor's just say this is what our intentions are. Are you, are you agreeable to this? I don't know that staff or anybody else necessarily has to be there, as long as we're just getting the verbal going, cause I know. Friday at five is the last time I wanna meet them. Um, so I don't want you to feel. You have to be there, you have to be there, we can.
That's good to know.
Whoever, Sue, Craig, myself, that wants to sit and just look them in the face and say this is what the intent is.
Well, I mean. I can't be there. Jen, I would feel a lot more comfortable with Jen is at least there. Just because she knows so much of the legalities, what you can do and can't do. I think Jen has to be there, just from that standpoint. Is that, do you feel that way about it or? But, um. But, um, but otherwise, yeah, I, I would rather. Have both councils have some degree of understanding and consensus before we start getting the lawyers drafting. That sounds contentious and.
If we could just get it written up in what we were planning to send to the attorney.
Yeah.
So that we have kind of a rough verbiage pending attorney approval. Then we can just have it to read it.
Yeah.
Jason, I'm gonna send you a couple examples of language.
I think I have something going on, I don't have exact time yet, but I, I. I don't think I am.
I should be like five minutes after five, I should be able to be back later anyways.
Alright.
And Ken, I like your suggestion, cause I think that keeps us on the straight level instead of the first time they hear most of the lawyers, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we can keep your relations.
Roughly near.
Yeah, I mean, it just makes you suspicious of what this means. Put services.
Yeah. I think we totally agree, so let's get the motion and let's close that one out until we can move on, unless, unless there's pertinent decision. Good conversation about it. Motion to take the action discussed.
Directly to Sheldon.
Directly to Sheldon.
Yeah. Yeah.
Second.
Yeah. Seeking consensus with their council too.
All those in favor signify with, uh, the sign I. Opposed, same sign. Opposed or abstention, same sign. Okay. Um, Mark, review and possible approval of quotes for repairs. I would like to, if you guys don't mind, flip this really quick. Greg Picklap is here, if you guys haven't met Greg. Greg is from Ames Regional Economic Alliance Development Committee, Friends, Story County. Did I get it right? Greg has come down, Greg has been helping with some of this. Ames, this is the service that the taxpayers, the, the county took taxpayer dollars and created this position. Greg and I, regularly, Greg has helped out on some bonding things, and he's been helping run down some of the funding on this. So if you don't mind, if he just gives the funding grant update, then you're not stuck here the rest of the time if you need to run, cause I know we're at, and so.
You're getting me out of a church thing with my wife right now.
So you want us to talk about the quotes first?
Not a cooking class.
Do you want us to go quotes? You are being recorded?
She'll never find the archives. Thank you for the time tonight. So, uh, regarding three twenty-one. A couple of key things there. Uh, previously, you, you had a catalyst in the offer for the previous owner. That never pulled the trigger for you. Those documentations are still somewhat valid as long as we can update them if you wish. Open catalyst is already on for the pre-application process, so that is an option as well. We did have emergency catalysts, uh, that was something that we were approaching IEDA about. That is where there's a streamlined process for emergency catalysts. It kind of bypasses the timeline. It can be used for immediate. Building needs that has a wall that's gonna come down, which obviously is three twenty-one as an option. However, with the flooding in Northwest Iowa, Rock Valley, Spencer, those funds have been frozen until further noticed. And that is just because all funds have been diverted to those communities that are still recovering from a flooding, so. IDA says it's not completely off the table, but they're not willing to give a timeline, which does not help you all with winter coming hard and fast. I have a T-Mobile community grant in place that I'm working with MIPA on as part of your contract. That's no additional cost, no local match. That is up to fifty thousand dollars. Um, that is a project that runs on a quarterly through twenty twenty-six. That is something that we can apply for now, which is due September thirtieth, or we can kick it back for a January, uh, award date for the next quarter. So that one does not have any timeline attached to the, uh, construction or materials already done. Catalyst does. Anything you do ahead of catalyst does not qualify as your local match for it. Even emergency catalyst doesn't qualify for that. So anything you do is off the table, yeah.
Many of those can be used consecutively or concurrently or.
So if you apply for emergency catalyst, you can't apply for regular catalyst, which is open right now.
Even though we've already applied and, and been.
Pre-approved.
Pre-approved, yeah.
Yeah, pre-approved. Basically, what we do is update it now that you're the owner as the brand application. We can do that through the process that Jen's already started for that, and basically we're updating it and doing your new concepts that we've been moving forward with. So you're basically starting brand new and there's no guarantee, you gotta go through the pre-application process all over again.
But we can't apply for that and the emergency at the same time.
One or the other. Emergency catalyst is a streamlined process and it's a pre-application process, but it's strictly. You're pre-approved, you're approved within thirty days, and then you're out the door using the funds.
Did we not have some information that those were being freed up again? From Spencer and Rock Valley?
There was, at the last council meeting, I gave an indication that there was. Greg has met with them since then.
That have said that we can't give any timeline at this time.
Okay.
So that timeline.
Kind of like a thirty day period.
Every thirty days, we're getting an update. Until the next thirty day timeline comes up, I can't guarantee you when those funds are.
And the problem with the emergency.
Said it's not off the table, it's just they can't guarantee a timeline.
Exactly.
And they probably get approved and not get money for a year or two.
Correct.
What you're saying.
Yeah, and, and also too, I know you're on the timeline with the winter approaching.
Yeah.
They could approve it November twelfth, which is no good to you.
But we can't start the work. You wouldn't, you wouldn't get that. We wouldn't get that if we start the work with the application process.
Is that true for the emergency as well?
Emergency is on a case by case basis.
Right.
Catalyst is happening right now. So you could not start work if you apply for, for regular catalyst. You have to wait till regular catalyst is awarded. April comes around for the timeline and then when the timeline is awarded, then you could start work. Again, you have an entire winter on that.
By the timeline.
Here's something you can consider though. You can do the structural work that you want right now. On your bid process, I went through your agenda and saw the bid side. If you wanna go do that. You still have ample things in your building you can apply for regular catalyst with. You got the front edge, you got the front, you got the windows, you got everything on that additional, um, uh, amendment for twenty-two and change.
Yeah.
That stuff you can apply for catalyst with. So you're not completely out of catalyst for the running, it's just the structural stuff. Anything you do before catalyst is even applied for and pre-approved. It's off the table for your local match.
But the new owner could also. Access catalyst after we transfer the building, if we just save the wall and do that.
Correct. The, the key thing though is. What do you wanna do with the, do you wanna sell it? Do you wanna owner? Do you wanna lease to own? Those are the other questions we gotta start working on as well with the RFP and things like that. Those are the things, now my T-Mobile grant, no local match. That's up to fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars. That one is usually in conjunction with Main Street USA, so even though you're not a mainstream community, Slater rates really high on that scale with the improvements you've already done. So that helps your scoring on that basis. And that is every quarter. So every four months, it releases another grant application.
And that one, the applications do.
September thirtieth, but then reopen, it's October to January one. So every quarter, we have reloads.
And the award. Notification would be win on that.
Thirty, sixty days from, from close of the quarter.
But we can begin construction regardless of the award on that.
Yeah, that one has no ties to it, so you.
So we get to start and hope for some back funding.
Yeah, or you could put it in for interior, or you could do it for your business concept, or you wanna turn it into a business incubator or a restaurant option. Um, I met with SBDC today, Leah Locke. She's got several applicants on the business side that are food truck vendors. One of the things they're looking at is, you know, maybe we roll it into. Where a food truck vendor is looking for that next step during the off season. You know, from the winter months when they can't roll around from site to site. They roll in the back, they store the facility there. But then they use the front edge for that off season and then they roll back out again. So you can keep changing the food options as, as an example. My example to you is, there are options available. I just need to know what's your decision on the timeline for your construction bids. If you're moving forward now. I don't recommend you do the amendment for the twenty-two and change. Keep that off the table for regular catalyst or emergency catalyst. Cause you start to have several big things to do with that building, yeah.
How much is catalyst or how much do you think we would get?
It's a straight hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand, yeah, okay.
Whether it's catalyst or emergency.
What's that? Emergency catalyst is a hundred thousand, regular catalyst, catalyst is a hundred thousand. The biggest difference between emergency catalyst and regular catalyst is that timeline. You don't have to wait to four months for processing. You're pre-approved, pre-application, done. And then money's available to you to start using, cause those are funds used for. Buildings that a gust of wind over the winter could knock down. That's why the extreme timeline is in place for that.
But bad timing for. The state right now.
I mean, they're accepting applications. We can still put in an application, they just are.
I have confirmed with the state, regular catalyst funding's in place. That has not been tapped.
Emergency.
Emergency is off the table for another thirty days minimum. From, to, from as of September first. And then I, I just got an update last week when I was at Lita Cities. They're saying that time, that thirty days is gonna end up before we move into September here, and then. Another thirty days in October and so forth, so. They won't get any indication until that thirty days.
Until, until basically October first.
Even if it's open. Indications are, I don't count on it. Cause they, well, they still have the contract season up in Northwest Iowa, they wanna.
Yeah, I would tell you. I've worked in Spencer and I volunteered in Spencer and doing stuff up there. I haven't been to Rock Valley. They're not gonna recover from this.
Yeah.
They're gonna lose over a thousand homes. Are gonna get demolished, and now that's, that, all of that area was never in the floodplain, is now gonna be in the FEMA floodplain.
And good luck.
Those houses are not gonna get rebuilt.
Well, and I was in Rock Valley, my daughter's going to the door, so as a freshman, this year we rolled up through Rock Valley to, to see the damage. And to your point on the flood insurance. Since it wasn't in the floodplain, massive amount of people, small business owners didn't have flood insurance. So now they're having to go the FEMA route, which is. Floodplain and now they're mandated that insurance.
Wow.
So.
We have a, I can't tell you how many businesses are not gonna return to Spencer. So some of these people lost their homes, their cars, every possession and their job.
And the, and the business has lost everything and they have no intention of reopening. And technically it's cheaper to move and start brand new than try to rebuild where you are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
These emergency catalyst.
Coming in.
Grants, if they're using those, I don't see that was reopened. I don't see those for a while. Reopened for a while, but.
The, the good news is emergency catalyst timeline's still in place and they're still allocated the funding and they're not touching it. And so we can still start that process for the preapproval that's already open. It closes January, and then we can apply for the spring and move forward with that.
So, the catalyst portion though. If our community center and library passes its bond vote. And they go, get to work on that hard, and they wanna apply for catalyst, and we're applying for this for catalyst.
Separate category and it wouldn't be eligible for catalyst for that. Catalyst is designed for remediation and helping restore historic buildings.
Perfect.
It wouldn't be tapped for this. It'd be a destination Iowa or something else, the state would allocate.
Yeah, so one other thing we kinda spitballed, which I don't know if you've gotten an update yet, but the supervisors in the left over ARPA money.
That is a timeline of later in October, they're gonna go through and revisit exactly what is still left, what has been returned. Um, I know they're having meetings right now with applicants to see if the funding is being used on a timely basis to meet the treasury deadlines from the US government. You all just got to talking about USDA, try dealing with the US Treasury. So that timeline is not until October. But again, when that time comes. They still have the same deadline you, you all did as a local government, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. To have it allocated.
Yeah.
Has to be locked in and allocated, otherwise it's.
Been spent by twenty-five.
It's, uh.
Twenty.
Twenty-six.
Six, yeah.
So we still have that timeline.
We could still make that request as the, as the.
Yeah, absolutely.
For some of that ARPA money, and then you go towards this project.
And the good news is you're shovel ready. So you would be able to commit to the process and have a shovel ready project. Whereas other communities, they have to go through that whole process again and submit the application process.
And will they care if we've started certain phases of it or approved phases of it?
I would say you, you get a bonus. You'd have to help out better, cause you're showing the initiative, you're committing the local dollars. You're getting, and you're just basically asking for money to help you, get you over the finish line without.
Okay.
Using local dollars for it.
That was kind of a question when we presented for the TIP dollars too, was.
That's right.
Was local match. It kind of came up as a.
Oh, right.
Yeah, as a bonus.
Yes, Slater and Zerain and, I mean, Jennifer, and I talked about this, only five communities applied for urban renewal TIF money this year from the county. So again.
So I think from the timeline perspective. I think that, does everybody agree the objective is to get the wall fixed before winter? Are we in agreement on that? So then I think if we got this T-Mobile grant and works and we got potential county money support, if we can do something to leverage that. We got some options at least. Those two aren't contingent on starting or not starting to work. I think we should look at these quotes and consider. With Mark's update, what we wanna do, the, the catalyst in my perspective, if it's not till April next year. My kind of vision for this is that we would, we would already have the building placed. What those terms are, is it a lease to own, is it a rent, is it a buy? We would have that executed before that date, and so that new owner could come in with their vision of all the inside and use catalyst to. Do what they wanted with it. So a key thing, reminder about regular catalyst.
Their, the application process closes in January. The pre-application process has to be, you have to go through that process to be even in the tunnel to get catalyst awarded to you.
So it would be silly for us to not just go ahead and submit.
That would be my recommendation on regular catalyst. We move forward with the three twenty-one, we update everything on it. And we submit it and get the preapproval process started with Jimmy T down at IEDA. If that's the case, then we can point to the things we wanna do, and if we change, then basically. Not to. Use the route you just committed to on USDA, but ask for forgiveness on the backside and fix it. You know, you start the process, you show the commitment, you commit to local dollars, and then you, you ask for an amendment later on during the process. The, the one in, the project we did in Collins was that, we changed, we asked for a change in the process because construction changed, they found additional things. It's just an amendment to your grant application.
So let's do that.
So they will amend, some of the free. They will amend it for some of the. Work already done.
They know a little amendment for things that come up, things that weren't considered as part of your construction.
You know, we could say, oh, now we do.
Right.
Now we do wanna do the front windows and the onion and the back steel on the back wall or whatever.
Correct, or, or you started the process and you, and you get through your initial bid process and they find additional things. You can make that, cause you haven't touched that. That's additional structural things that could be included in your, your catalyst application.
Or, or we've identified the end user and they're like, oh, I'd really like these things. I'd really like you to get these to these things, and then you say, okay, yep, we'll do that for the transaction.
Yeah, and that's where the T-Mobile grant would come in, additional county money. Uh, Perry Meadows Foundation, there, there's a whole range in Story County Community Foundation, grant application process.
That just closed.
That just closed, but it'd be reopening again, and they're just starting a small line of small business grants that are gonna be opening next week. So that's thirty-five hundred dollars here and there, so that could be used for a small business owner looking to start up.
Perfect.
So for clarity. So. Other than the T-Mobile, we'd mostly be cell phone and speaking the law. And then we post.
Your timeline to meet the winner, you'd have to cell phone. But I, I recommend holding off on the windows and the extra twenty-two.
But only do the walls.
We're not talking about doing the, the. Foundation or the.
Foundation would be.
But not the, not the flooring. I would rather not pour the floor until we know. I would rather not pour the floor until we know. But we also save that depending on if we can find who we think is gonna purchase it by then. Fill, you know, move plumbing, put plumbing and.
And wait for catalyst and we wait for the potential vendor that, you know, know what we actually want.
Well, I just want clarification, are are you all okay starting forward with catalyst? So we can get the preapplication deadline met for January?
I think so.
Okay.
The only risk is if they happen to free up the emergency cat. We've kind of closed the door on that one.
Well, we will have started to work and so we'll be disqualified. But if they open it up before our construction begins, Greg, you'll certainly let us know and we, if we have to pause it.
If we hit that deadline and we get the announcement, we're gonna pivot to emergency catalyst and go that route before, because I really don't want to wait till April. If we can say, hey, listen, we're willing to flip to emergency and meet those guidelines and pull our. Regular catalyst. So much is better for me.
Well, we'll know by next week, October first.
But it sounds like the. Cocktail conversation says it's not happening.
Yeah, and honestly, I'm. I'm a realist, wait till November. Election day comes and goes, let's see what happens after that. That's my deadline to me personally.
Yeah. Perfect. Thanks, anybody else have a question for Greg?
In the meantime, I'm gonna work on an RFP for a proposal for the building and then I'm also gonna bring back grant applications that I'll send to. Uh, Mayor and Jen, so we can start working on targeting for the deadline because that calendar is coming up. So that way we can start working on the timeline of saying we can start, yes, apply, apply, don't apply, avoid it. That's it.
All right, Mark, sorry. No, you're fine. So with the two proposals you have, I've also. I know I don't see, but story construction, I talked to them, they. They just aren't gonna get to it in time, so then. They declined to put a bid on it. So I I reached out to Austin Rogers for a third bid. Uh, and that was Friday and I've talked to Austin this afternoon again, he is interested in doing, or he would be interested in giving a bid. He's going kind of a different route, he's going more to a steel beam and and framed. To to shore up that. The roof and then would basically fill in with a wood stud structure. That's how he. Likes to do it or would like to do it and. Obviously, I don't have a bid from him, he would have one if. If we wanted the third. He would have it by the fourteen. He talked to his demo guy and. Eh, his people. And he. And and I don't know if he would be going with. The steel or the mason, I don't know what he would end up with, but. He talked to his people and they they have room in their schedule for this fall to have the work done. As I know, uh, the virgin also has. Room in their schedule that they would have it done by Snowfly. The other one that you have, which is. Centers. I don't think they would. Their schedule is about, I think, I don't know if you even wrote it in here. But in his email, I think he was probably twelve to eighteen months out. So. There are quite a ways.
So if Rogers did it. Would it be brick facade?
It would be a block, well, it would be either, it it depends if they go, they do a wood structure, then it would be a wood structure. Uh, you would just put. You would do whatever you wanna do on your facade, you know, you can put a thin brick or whatever your book wanted to be. I I think just like the other ones, you would leave that. As a blank canvas really and let the owner. You know, or we're we're just leaving it a block wall, the virgin would be. So you can go get the thin.
Yeah.
Based up or what, you know, whatever.
Like with Rogers, we couldn't leave a wood wall.
You you would have some sort of extra. Yeah, if he chose to put it that way. I just told him we need a blank slate.
Yeah, we're not trying to make, that's what I was gonna, we're trying to not trying to make fancy, but you have to have some sort of finish on.
Yeah, you would make some sort of, so it's weather resistant, you know. Yes.
So how does that jive with our uh, Main Street ordinance that requires?
I don't know how words can decide.
These are both block, right? Concrete block, that's what I see.
Yes. Yeah. What this is is to get the building saved, not getting kind of looks, I don't think that's our. And I don't think you'd wanna put a a. This is because our looking.
I just wonder like, you know, if we have block, then block or brick, it's gonna be, it's gonna meet our code. As Lisa's been structured.
It's in construction, so I don't think.
If we do wood. You've got to cover something, it never had brick on the exterior, it had tin.
It had stucco before that. You know, obviously. And this is, this, we spoke about from the garage stall, from the south garage store. South. Yeah, because the whole wall is not bad, it's built from that garage stall south. Is all that's getting replaced, the the overhead doors would all remain. That's all.
Okay, safe, yeah, I guess you'd say.
He's probably looked at more than I have, the second one, the the sender.
Yeah.
Is the same except for two windows, right?
Yeah, I believe so.
I'm not too, yeah, man, I guess I'm not worried about this. Real hard at this point because like Mark said, we're already, we're in, we're still in the, when what we're talking about passing tonight. We're still in the construction phase, so meeting this. Is for future reference, not something that we have to consider.
Just that we'd wanna be cognizant of that we weren't a mile away from getting to what we would want there, you know, that we wouldn't leave. That a mile away, but this reads to me that it would be the downtown commercial district design guidelines. Outlined in the downtown commercial district design guidelines, where.
That is down about halfway down page, design guidelines or.
Okay, so that is what's considered the downtown commercial.
Mostly looking for a look. Second page has. Concrete block prohibited.
As your finish.
Right, right, I just, we just need to keep that in line because we're. Starting a town for future development on Main Street.
Well, then, I mean, I guess that's fine, if concrete blocks prohibited, that's how the other guys would be with. They're still on finished product, either way.
For the front of the building? Or does that include the side of the building also?
On the corner, it wraps around. It does, it does include the side because it sits on a corner. So it includes the Marshall side, street sidewalk. Yeah.
I mean, brick masonry that does not fit historic integrity of Main Street. That's pretty broad.
Yeah.
Concrete masonry units, blocks, cinder blocks as primary facade material. If you put paint over the the concrete blocks, does that change the facade material?
I think in murals.
Yeah.
I mean.
We can always.
First choice.
The third one's wood. I assume we can put that brick skin, is that?
Yeah, it's a besides.
The question ultimately is, do you wanna wait for the third one? Till the fourteenth and then. Hope that Austin and then can do it, or do you wanna take action tonight?
Austin also indicated he couldn't start anything until mid or end of November.
He, yeah, he he would be a little bit further out before he would even be able to start.
I think we have a good bid, I think we have a trusted person.
He didn't gross wins.
He knows our buildings, he knows.
He does.
He knows this.
And Mark just to balance this guy, he's the one that did gross win. Pretty damn competitive there too, so we got a reasonable, you still competitive?
I believe so, he's. He's actually the one that.
He'll be doing the daycare as well at the same time. He'll be in town doing the daycare too.
It means if you knock out two windows, you still be dealing with it by fifteen, so. Not that I'm voting right now, but I guess I'd be fine saying, go ahead, so we get this ISO off Main Street.
I'd rather keep it. Block or.
I agree with that. And then I just asked, the other thing I asked Mark is, let's just ask him to save as much of that brick as he can. And set it in the back or do do something for the time being and if somebody would wanna, if the end user would want it.
Yeah.
They could clean those bricks and put them back up inside if they wanted or outside. A lot of people.
I think a lot of people would rather have the inside.
And the outside, we can work on what that finish ends up being like. Yeah, so is there any?
That we've got a, we've got a good bid from a, from a competent contractor that's been used before.
He he's doing work for Grosswin right now too, he's, they're changing their demo greenhouse and that's his. I call him more of a general.
It'll be through Masons that are laying the. For somebody that'll be doing the actual masonry.
Right, he's more of a general contractor.
Right, so having more than one project isn't a, isn't a stretch for him compared to. Say in Austin Rogers.
Not, not just that, Austin doesn't do this.
Austin has done some in the the dolls, the north dolls and in Aitney. Um, I guess they've done all the split work in there. Now it's a hard. Restaurant.
It's, and that's just what I'm getting at, it's.
Yeah, I'm hearing, I'm hearing consensus, so I would welcome a motion.
And just to mention that it does fall under the hundred and ninety-six thousand bid process requirement. If it was over a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, then we would have to go through the competitive bid process.
Which in. A lot of other things involved then.
Yeah, I would move that we move ahead and approve the virgin. Uh, for phase one only. To shore up it's that that structure and we leave. We leave the front entrance door, so phase two. For another day and potentially for some catalyst brands or.
I move that we move ahead with with phase one. So that we can do it in a timely manner and get this thing shored up before the snow flies.
And then one just last question for a a rookie question. When we approve something like this. Where do, where are we pulling this money from? Oh, that's. So this will come, we'll, we'll bring this out of.
General family somewhere, somewhere.
All right, perfect, so we've got our two motions, we'll, uh.
One additional question. Contingency, old buildings, stuff happens. How far is he getting this before he realizes that something really bad is?
I would think fairly soon.
Okay, so after first ten or fifteen grand, you'll know that.
I would think once they get things shored up. Yeah, you know, I'm I'm envisioning some sort of.
Internal structure.
Internal wall. You know, and then.
This guy well enough, he'll be checking with you on a regular basis that. Oh crap.
Yeah, I think you. He won't be able to hide it either.
Right, no.
No, the whole time.
You can hide a hundred thousand really easy.
Once that wall comes down. If it falls.
It's like, huh, that didn't work.
All right, so having received two motions, is that the final discussion? No other discussion? All right, so all those in favor signify with aye. Opposed, same sign. The extension, same sign. All right, carries, you're gonna say, does that leave us with anything, one more thing? One new business item, resolution number ten, just go ahead, Greg.
I never said that.
We're gonna push him for that, we're gonna push him for that. Resolution number ten. Property owners at nine oh five Trail Drive for stormwater, Mark, do you just wanna give a thirty thousand foot quick explanation what this was?
Uh, this was to make that whole area better. When Jim did the original development there. Putting water on those on a few residents there. Uh, this pond, they were gonna basically daylight the pond to the same backyards. And make it a a. A mess, a a marshy mess.
This is where you can see this kinda outline.
Yeah, with its drain. I believe so. So it's gonna be all underground to a. There's a, uh, yeah. There's an intake that it's gonna feed into basically.
And that lot further north. Lot further north has some of that marshy looking. Dotted drawing too, is that a problem up there?
No.
It's a change of elevation on them.
Yeah, that's an elevation.
We we have a tile. That we put in years, quite a few years ago that is off this page to the.
He's talking about this.
That is maybe a little lower, but I don't think they're a major. That's a low spot. So that is going.
That's all gonna drain into this.
That all goes into that intake. The existing intake that are covert, whatever.
I'm talking about that one that just barely shows into the.
So that, we have a tile that starts probably right there and then goes clear to the creek. Yep, that we put in quite a few years ago.
So basically instead of natural gravity fed to that and hoping it hits it. We're gonna put it in a pipe and force it to go down that drain to then get to a four mile creek.
Yeah, and that, to do that little project, uh, is about thirty some thousand, thirty-three or something like that. So Rogers is doing that because it's under TIF, so they'll get. Uh, a quick TIF back, I think on that, Jen, is that right? And we agreed that we will do the finished grading and CD ones. So that's really all the skin they have in it. That's fairly minimal.
What's, what's this quick TIF?
It's a upfront payment, but we'll pay as soon as the contract is signed, the TIF contract is signed.
We will pay.
We will pay to Rogers. The cost of this sewer.
So this roughly thirty. And then.
Usually TIP waits until. Till it starts making money. But we we did it with um, weeks or two when they did the Ryan Road, when they paid Ryan Road, we did an upfront payment as soon as. Soon as TIP was set in place. Soon as the contracts were signed.
Again, this was engineered, but we didn't have to go get. They had crews on site, we didn't have to go get bids.
And then our TIF, the TIF fund that we pull this out of then gets backfilled once those.
Now, actually, this thirty-three thousand will pull a lot of stormwater, which has sufficient rollover money. That was, that was something the attorney asks is where this upfront money has come from, because it won't really come out of TIP dollars, but it's in the TIP contract that we pay them. A upfront payment for it.
But the money.
What's that?
But the money comes back to us via TIF.
No.
No.
We are sitting.
It's just funneling through TIF in a way that they do the project, they execute it, we fund it. In the agreement versus us bidding it, engineering it.
It's gonna be cheaper in the long run anyway.
But that's not why we did it. Okay?
Well, no. The reason is this, this has been a sore subject for many. The to these properties, to these three properties. And I wanted to make it better and I called them out on it a while back. They took it to their engineer, no, it's fine, well, then I got a call from Riley, they were gonna start doing this pond work and he's like, hey, I have to drain this pond. I'm gonna flood these people's basements. And oh, by the way, when this pond is done. It's gonna be a mess back there because it's gonna go right where I'm pumping the water. I'm like, well, yeah, I know, but they said it's okay, he's like, it's gonna suck, I said, I know, but I've already went down that. I said, you call Austin and let's get a meeting with their engineer Snyder. And everybody and we met and it just took. It took more people than me.
But at the end of the day.
It's gonna be better.
TIP is in the title, but worth funding it already. Okay, yeah, but we get a better deal since it's.
It was gonna save a lot of people. To me, yeah, for sure that too.
When you say Riley, those are property owners?
They put all the underground.
They're doing this for Roger. Yes, okay.
So, I'd entertain a motion.
That's right, sir.
Any good discussion there? All right, all those in favor signify with aye. Opposed, same sign. The extension, same sign, all right, most carries, uh, we'll take one motion to adjourn.
We have two things quick. Uh, that I wanna touch base on. Uh, and maybe for next month, but. And I think I've seen this on your, no parking on the one hundred block of Green Street, I was. Gonna add up last month.
I forgot to get it on that agenda, yeah.
Um, so it's just.
To keep in mind, the Nighthawk parking lot backs up to that street, North and South Green. If you park in front of Nighthawk and you go to back your car up when there's cars parked back there behind you. There's a request from Nighthawk to remove the parking in that little section.
Make it no parking.
Because there's been so many back into accidents.
Mm-hmm.
So ju- just something to keep on.
So we'll have that on the next agenda.
Yeah.
Discussion more.
Uh.
Four or five recently.
They're, they're nonstop, they're.
Really?
Yeah.
We're talking bar, not field, right?
Bar. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and then the only other thing I have quick is Shell Balls Meter. They're working on getting that fixed. So.
Well, it's been out like at least a month now.
Yeah, pretty, pretty close to, yeah. But they've had people down, now they called Matt. Their. Early.
Yeah.
Public Works guy because. Rick knows nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, but they're, they're guy now, so Matt's been trying to. Work on it. We've given him a couple. Uh, companies to call and I don't know where they're at, but. On getting a hold of them, but so that's where that is.
And we wanted, the goal is have that done by a number of firsts.
That's our ultimate goal, yes.
That's what our contract says to start major.
Yeah. So.
And ours is.
Can be November, December.
It's two of the three months.
Who says the three?
Yeah.
So. But ours, they know about it and they're, they're trying to figure it out.
Yeah. And ours is working good.
Ours is, yeah.
Yeah, and Jen, you agreed, Mark planned for how to do it with.
But ours is just the out, right?
Well.
Yeah.
The, instead of technically us measuring our inflow, we're measuring our outflow.
Yeah, I, I sent that to, I sent that to.
To them.
Council, yeah, to Rachel and.
Appreciate.
And. Their question back was how, what, what did that change? So.
Nothing, that's where Mark is the meter.
Okay. Perfect. So, that's all.
Perfect, and thanks for the stop signs if you guys haven't noticed.
Were great.
Yeah, nobody's got speed feedback signs coming, so.
Uh, yeah, I think they were shipped actually, so.
Thank you.
I saw an email today that they're shipped.
Yeah, yeah, well, that was.
Which one are they?
What?
What are they, where are they like?
The. Speed feedback? They're just like, they're just what the state is putting in.
Just on a state.
Yeah.
The state's gonna put the two on two ten.
There's no like, do they ever say like, slow down and they flash red and then they go green and say thank you.
Oh. This is whatever the state uses.
Yeah.
I ordered the same one.
So.
If you've seen, if you've seen anyone on a state highway, it's probably, yeah.
It's probably gonna be, yeah. You can get a different color faceplate and I. I think the state orders them yellow, so that's what I did. I I talked to the same guy that the state did, so.
The trees look good trimmed up there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't touch them again. That was from.
Yeah.
I think we did that a while.
One thing, that tree farther back that hanger was sidewalk.
Oh, at Howard's?
Yeah.
Hammonds?
Yeah, yeah. That was a bit of an issue pulling out on first or twenty-first street, just trying to see the stop sign, especially six nine was closed. Cause I, and I, just me in the morning, forgetting to go to Main Street to the stop sign.
Sure.
Because you can't see who's sitting at the stop sign, you know, just so busy trying to get out there.
Oh.
You can't see the stop sign from the stop sign in Howard's. Because of that. Which six nine's open.
Part of the first.
You just couldn't see the other side.
Right, basically, cause traffic was all backed up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you just couldn't see who was coming.
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that reminds me of one last thing and then we can motion adjourn. I don't know if anybody noticed, but the sheriff was at the intersection on Saturday.
Two guys.
Two guys.
Oh, nice.
That's what I was told, and I told it went really well.
They weren't there when I went through, but they were.
They were.
It was two ten.
Traffic.
Two ten.
I don't know about me.
Times, I got in town about the same time they did, I think.
Yeah.
We admitted.
Sixty-nine was open, so. It was probably.
Already.
Kind of like the one I.